Good evening and welcome to the February 17th, 2016 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our January 6th, 2016 meeting minutes, and everybody was present, so all can vote. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of January 6th, 2016.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next up on our published agenda would have been record files. We have none of those tonight, so it takes us to consent items, and there's one item on the consent agenda tonight, AFP-7228-2016 for the Medallum Child Care, some modifications there. Any questions on the consent agenda? Is there a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve AFP-7228-2016 Metallum Child Care.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much for that. Now, it takes us to our site plan agenda. We have two tonight. First up is AFP-7230-2016 Capital One Bank at 317 Kettens Boulevard in the MXD Zone, and signed package and minor building elevation changes. This is an amendment to final plan, and presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening.
Good evening. Staff is before you tonight to discuss amendment to final site plan application, AFP-7230-2016. The subject property is located at 317 Kettens Boulevard and is situated within the Kettens Square Shopping Center, and the property is Zoned MXD. The applicant is requesting to amend the approved signed package and minor building elevation changes to the existing Capital One building. And here tonight is Gary Britt from MG Permits to discuss the application.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. We're proposing to install two replacement wall signs. You look at the slide that Jasmine has up there, there's a south and a north, sort of north elevation. The plan is for internally illuminated channel ledgers mounted to a non-illuminated aluminum blue background. And also, the second piece of this proposal is three non-illuminated awnings, the center awning to have a sign painted on it, and the last piece are some sconce lighting that's also on the same elevation with the awnings. That's it.
All right. Jasmine, would you please pull up, I don't remember which elevation it is, but I think it's the, let's see if I see it here, they're photo, they're sort of, they're not drafted, they're actually photo, Photoshop images.
Exhibit two.
For the...
The sign. This is a good example right here. So what struck me about this is I know it's not an actual detailed drawing, but the blue field really doesn't seem to work, or the size of the sign doesn't seem to work with the architecture of the building. So do you have something that shows what the real size of the sign is going to be, or how it's going to be on that...
Unfortunately, this is the rendering, I think there is an architectural drawing in there, Jasmine, if you look at...
So here are the drawings.
Right. So those are scale and elevation drawings that show, this is essentially, it's a branding item for the bank. That's why the blue field is being...
Sure, sure. Jasmine, would you, can you zoom in on the, on the sign there, the elevation will be short? Okay. So why doesn't that respect kind of the limits of the frieze and the basic detailing of the building now? Because the current sign does.
It's a, it's a, again, branding, the gold...
Talking about size, I'm not talking about composition or color. I understand the logo and I understand the composition, but the size itself is not really worked out to work with the building.
That boomerang logo is, is a registered trademark in that. I mean, the relationship between the letters and the logo is part of the registered trademark. So I'm not sure if I'm following you, but that, again, it's, I get where you, I think I get where you're going with this, but...
Let's take this apart a minute. If you slide over to the other, the other drawing, it's sort of the side elevation or section.
Want to talk about that?
I guess the way you accomplish this is it's protruding off the face of the building a little bit.
That's correct.
But I'm not sure that the boomerang actually clears the rest of the, I'm not sure how that really works with all of it. There's a lot of relief on it. There's a lot of profile to the cornice and the column capitals and all that stuff. So my question is, is there really some sense that it works there with the size of the frieze and the size of the...
What's proposed, I believe, has taken all that into consideration. Again, I didn't design it myself, I didn't measure it either, we're, you know, we're handling the installation piece, but everything fits from what I have been told.
So, maybe, explain to me, what is your role in the project, then?
We're, we pull the permits for the sign company and the permit, for the permit people, so we're not doing the installation.
So you're not the sign company that did the design?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Sure.
Yeah, I have a question. Jasmine, several years ago, when Panera took over the space opposite block, there was a kind of, some concern about the awnings that were there before the previous tenant, and the concern was that those awnings were not really allowed in, they were grandfathered in. Are we allowing awnings now in the shopping center? Because this has three awnings here.
See, I didn't know, but I looked to see if there was any site plans or anything for the awnings, and I didn't really, didn't see any.
So we don't know whether that's allowable or not, based on, based on previous history?
Yeah.
Well, let's be clear. So what would allow or disallow? There's, there's a design guideline for the center, there's an approved signed package, right?
Right.
So I think that's the only place that would be, that would have any kind of guideline for this, right?
That's correct.
So...
Can you check on that? I mean, just to, and I'm not going to hold it up for that reason, but I'd like you to check on that because I don't want to create another situation where we're creating a precedent here that doesn't really, or shouldn't exist.
Because I know the Panera, the major tenants were all approved as a separate site plan, and the bank site has its own site plan, so all the signed packages and the building elevation is all separate from the rest of the shopping center.
Hmm, okay.
Which actually takes me to my next question. I didn't want to dominate everything, but if you go to that elevation, please, where the awnings are?
Do it, start again.
The elevation of the photo with the awnings.
Exhibit two, I think, is the best illustration of that.
For the canopy awning?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh-huh. So when I looked at this, I was a little suspicious about the height of this, because the windows are kind of low to begin with, and I'm not sure that really represents how high an awning ought to be over a public sidewalk. And I didn't see a drawing that actually measured or showed a dimension off the sidewalk. I'm really kind of going on my own memory of how, how low the windows seem walking by it. So did anybody talk about that, or review that?
Well, not particularly, but the best illustration which shows that doesn't lend probably to your thinking, that this elevation, the side view, the canopy, the material, it's got a, so there, where, like your traditional valance, you would see it shed style, and then, you know...
Do you want to put that up? We can, we can all look at it together.
Yeah.
Sorry.
If you can use the mouse to point out where you're talking.
Oh, okay. It would be, yeah, yep. So, yeah, so that, the, just, so right here, you can see that, I think that is portrayed as the window, so the sun, the awning is...
Yeah, but the critical dimensions, so what's the distance from the sidewalk to the underside of the awning?
It's not...
Right, it's not on there. And that's what's suspicious, because I think in walking by, just anecdotally, it seems like it'd be very low.
It needs to be at least a minimum of eight feet.
Eight feet.
Yeah.
Probably not eight feet.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
How do we proceed?
Well, we've got to take public testimony, then we'll discuss that. Any other questions or clarifications? No? Okay. Is there anyone here that's commenting on this application? Okay. All right. So Jasmine, what is the recommendation, and we'll take the discussion from there?
Staff recommends to grant AFP-7230-2016 Capital One Bank signed package and minor building elevation changes, finding in compliance with Section 24-172A of the City Code.
All right, great. So I guess my one comment is, I think what we're used to seeing for signed packages, especially in the shopping center and certainly around, around the area in general, is a little bit better integration with whatever the constraints are of the architecture. And I'm not, not prescribing a certain dimension, and I'm not even saying you should change the logo, but this really looks like it was just tacked on without any real regard to what, what the working space was for it. And I know you guys have branches all over the place with constraints, urban constraints, things like that. I know you can do it. So, so it's out there. And the other is that the awnings, I think, are not, not a realistic place right now for height, for whatever. They're blocking a lot of the window space, they're pretty low on the sidewalk. So I think that's something you guys probably ought to take back and sort through a bit more. Any comments here?
Put that as a condition.
Let me?
Make that as a condition?
Well, I almost wonder if it needs to come back.
Yeah, I think we need a revised...
Yeah, I think it's warranted, just a condition.
Yeah. There was a lot of care taken when the center was developed for a signed package and for design guidelines, and I want to make sure we're...
Be respectful of that.
Exactly, exactly. Does that make sense? Is that...
Yes, I think so. We were here with the original bank proposal, so we talked about this with you guys some five, six years ago. I guess I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure.
So that wall sign, you want us to make it fit more in conjunction with the architecture? Is that a fair way to put it? And it's not, I'm not saying I disagree with this, it looks like it could have just been...
So the swoosh breaks below the threshold of the frieze?
The frieze.
And then the top of the swoosh breaks into the, the crenellation at the top of the frieze.
Okay.
And we're not entirely sure from this drawing whether that swoosh even clears the cornice at this point. It's kind of a funny, it seems to, but it's, it's not clear that it actually fits, based on, based on the Photoshop drawing, or Photoshop touchup.
Yeah. No, I, like you said, don't disagree. It's possible.
And then again, the awnings, I think some care should be taken that they're sized and positioned appropriately for a public sidewalk.
I'm sympathetic to branding, but it's, but I'm sure there's, you know, a good branding company's already had some more horizontal, you know, versions, rather than a, a more vertical, which is what this is.
Yeah.
I understand. So with the last question I have, with the awnings, so assuming we can get the awnings to the minimum height above grade at eight feet, does that seem like that would get us where we're...
I don't actually know the code. Is that, is that the number?
He said eight feet.
Yes.
Any compliance with the...
They would be fine with me if they meet, you know, basic code.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's a nice dress up for the facade, actually. Blue's a little weird with the traditional color, but it's, you know, it's fun.
Danny, does that sound okay down here?
Sure, I just wouldn't want to hit my head, you know, walking anywhere. I'm so tall.
You got new hats or something, Danny?
All right. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Jasmine, is that good enough direction to...
Yes.
So I think I'd ask for a motion for deferral on this, or, actually, Frank, would that be deferral or continuing? We had this conversation...
Yeah, yes.
We're going to have it next week, too.
Either way, even if you're deferring it, you are moving it to a specific date, so either terminology is fine. Continuing would be, deferral might be appropriate, simply because there's more that they're to bring to the table.
That's right.
It's not really continuing your discussion. You may have a new discussion when you see new information.
Actually, I defer, defer.
I'd ask Jasmine if, based on submittal deadlines and things, is it practical to go next meeting, or would you need to...
I'm not sure. I would ask the applicant.
Right, we need to, I need to go, I guess, back to the drawing board with these guys, so to speak, and come up with something that, I guess, we'll discuss the timeframe that works for everyone to get on the next agenda. If not, it'll be the filing agenda, I guess.
I mean, the business is clearly marked now, it's not changing names, so I don't think we're putting in any kind of undue...
Just to be safe, why don't we just say March 16th, and then, that way?
Okay.
Very good. All right. Is there a motion, please, for deferral? And do you need to mention the date in the motion?
It's a motion to defer until March 16th. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to defer AFP-7230-2016 until March 16th?
2016. 2016.
2016.
2016. Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks very much for all of this on that.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is, excuse me, AFP-7220-2016 Firebirds, 390 Spectrum Avenue in the MXD Zone. This is for final architecture and siding for Building F. And this is an application for amendment to final site plan, and presenting from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening.
Good evening. This is for application AFP-7220-2016 for final architecture and siding of Building F, which is located with the Spectrum or Watkins Mill Town Center Development. The subject property is located, or is addressed at 390 Spectrum Avenue in Zoned MXD. The property received final site plan approval in 2013 as part of SP-12-0002, which approved the footprint for Buildings F, H, L, and M. Additionally, at the time of approval, final architecture was approved for Building H, which is now formally known as the Majestic. Here tonight to present the application is Pete Henry from BP Realty. May I answer any questions you guys may have?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Haven't seen you in months. Nice to meet you.
It's nice to be back. We've been working away on getting this project rolling. I spent the day in Annapolis with Mike Miller and a whole group of cadre of other secretaries, so we're making whatever progress we can, I think, unifying whatever our approaches with that, together, the city, the county, the rest of it. That is the next step on that item.
Good.
On the, on the Majestic itself, it's coming along great. Donna's been great to work with. It is, we're targeting a July opening on that. We specifically, candidly, held off the Firebirds construction. We had that deal done quite a while ago, but I saw it as being just a mess. If we went ahead and pushed that ahead, maybe some developers might have to get the money, and then had this construction, massive construction project next door. So we've held off, held off, held off, and it's now at a point where I'm prepared, my partner is prepared, to move forward with the project and let it get built. Firebirds, if you haven't been there, is a phenomenal restaurant. We had our pick, really, of the restaurants we wanted, because this is the pin corner, and I know we talked about the pin corner some time ago, what would be the best use for this. And we really thought a signature restaurant was what we wanted. We wanted something that had a great bar scene, something that had indoor and outdoor seating. We wanted the outdoor seating, and candidly, I put the outdoor seating on the other side. The Firebirds experts came back and said it should be on 355. That's really where you're going to get that presentation and sense, and so I said that makes sense to me. So we moved some of the utilities around to accommodate that. Dave Duncan from our shop is really the engineering background and the brain that knows about that in the landscaping. We redid the landscaping plan next to it, that was done by, and Lee's here, my wife, Lee Henry is here, very knowledgeable, but intimately involved in the design and the layout of all of these, these projects. She's really the, the candidate of brains behind what goes on in terms of these buildings configuration. I do the layouts, but she's really driving force behind all the rest of it. And Matt knows that, because I know he's been on the site with her. We picked Firebirds because it's excellent architecture, inside and outside. It has an elevated platform in terms of food and alcohol. It does a great job in terms of controlling what the impact is to what's around it. It doesn't have the rowdy bar scene, it's not the wild alcohol, it has a very heavy food concentration, which is what we wanted. It has an elevated experience in terms of the menu, heavy steak orientation. We were extra careful, because we have a $95 million project next to it, you know, in terms of that apartment building, to make sure that we installed smoke scrubbers. You may not know this, but we, as owners, we want smoke scrubbers. And we directed the smoke away from, so it's a four-stage, state-of-the-art smoke scrubber, so you don't have that smell, because if I had to live next door to something that was smelling that way, it'd drive me crazy. So we, Firebirds was willing to go through the process of do what is, I think, their only smoke scrubber in their entire chain. I think it's the first of many, because as they move into urban locations, these restaurants have to begin to think about what the impact is, that people live next to it. We have the most sophisticated in terms of grease trap that's in place, they do wood burning, we have outside wood burning area storage, it's really for show and quick convenience. We have a separate area as well that's attached to the dumpster. The dumpster is enclosed and air-conditioned, because again, you're next to it, from my perspective, I'm a resident, we don't want it. So we, you put that, that's all been. We've tried to be as careful as we can with this building. We had two and a half years to, as we postponed it, to get this done, so we had a very long runway to get this done the right way. I think it came out phenomenal. It's very tall relative to how we could have built it, because we wanted to have that elevated presence. With me tonight is Donna Brown, with the group, the architectural group that designed it, and so if you have any questions on it, she'd be the one to respond to that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are you going to present the, present the building, the site, and the architecture, then?
I'm happy to do that, and then you can answer questions, I think, because I'm probably most familiar.
Why don't you run down through the site plan?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, show, show some of those points on the plan.
Sure, okay.
I actually brought some printed-out renderings. Would you like those? Just be a little easier to...
We had, we had a small version of that in our packet, and if we just showed on the monitor, I think that would work.
Is that enough?
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Yep. What happens is the, we have the main entrance door, we're going to end up bringing through...
I tell you what, can we start with the site plan?
Perfect. Okay. So from an orientation perspective, this is 355 going north, this is the new Watkins Mill Road that's been installed and constructed. Kaiser is over here to the south side, where the hand is wandering now. Entrance will be from this direction, this is a right-in, right-out onto Paramount Park Drive. Further north than 355 is the entrance off of 355. It comes in, it comes up Spectrum Avenue, past in between the two Paramount apartment buildings, the rowdy there. You drive up. Inside here, we have designed two sections of parking. One section of parking is the external section, and then we have another 150-odd spaces inside the Majestic, underneath, at ground level, so that you can drive in from here. This commutes through, you can see the walkway allows people to come out this direction. The theory was that if we split the parking, so that this parking could be accessed and most easily by Building F and D. But this became, if you parked in here in the covered walkway, you could walk straight out, that would allow you to use most likely this restaurant, which will be, or crossover to Barking Mad, California Tortilla, and another restaurant, hopefully it's a fish restaurant, we don't have it signed yet, but I'm hoping we have it signed, we'll find out, we'll let you know. So that by splitting the parking between the surface parking and the other, and orienting where the entrances and exits came, it worked most successfully. We think that's going to work. We've done some modifications in terms of the parking, there's just a slight shift in what the parking spaces were. The dumpster originally proved was out right on 355, okay? The designers said that's a terrible idea, and candidly, that was my idea way back when, but I'm willing to listen to people with better ideas anytime. So they moved that in over here, that's hence the air-conditioned section. This allows for the, for the truck to come in, pull, and go back out, without having, with minimum backup time. Again, it drives us crazy as apartment owners and operators, when the backup is beep, 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 the long backups drive me crazy. So this is set up, the backup goes off the back, it's minimum disruption to people. We haven't organized the hall times yet, but the goal is to have the hall time be after 10 o'clock. Whether we're successful in that, we think we'll get to nine anyway, but we're not sure when it'll be. But that's, the guide is not, is not an early morning call. Loading, in the same way, comes from this direction, so you can pull right in, the loading is through the rear. We've sheltered and screened the backside of where the utilities are, and where the usual, you know, gas risers and those kinds of things with this wall that Donna will be able to show you later on. The grease traps and everything else are here underground, so no one, no one sees them. Handicap parking immediately next to the door, so you have a nice present, presence and presentation. Landscaping around this side here, landscaping, and there's a landscaping plan, thank you very much, and a garden plan over here. This is set up, and if you have questions, my wife, Lee, can talk about it. As opposed to just doing a, a straight grass, you know, what should we do here? How about some really nice grass? Okay, instead of doing really nice grass, we're actually doing a planting, a gazebo-type area, a couple of greenhouses, and a planting area in here that would be sufficient for growing actually vegetables for the restaurant called Barking Mad, which is in the back, so that you would have that far into the table, direct delivery, which should be a phenomenal opportunity. The, again, she can speak more to that if you have questions on that. The, the, back to the Firebirds, the Firebirds building itself, as we say, this is, this is facing north into, so this elevation here is facing into it, into the parking spaces, and handicap's right there. This is the entrance, so if I flip this, I'm getting better at this machine. You can see the outdoor seating, you can see the entrance to it. There is a beveled canopy, metal canopy. The building is all accented with stone, which is consistent with its kind of, I don't want to call it a Colorado wood burning, I don't know what the phrase would be, but that theme, you know what it is. When you go inside, I wish they had pictures of the inside, the way they present their bar, it's a giant U-bar with this huge glazing of bottles going up that are colored, and it's just a terrific scene for, for entertainment afterwards, drinking, dining, and they need that room just because of the staging that they have in terms of the volumes that they run through the door, because the food's good. It is very good food. So that's why we picked them. This material here, she can walk through, we spec, everything we build, we tend to build because we're going to keep it. It all goes into the family, you notice, we don't sell anything. Takes a long time to build these things, but when we build them, we keep them. This is brick material here, even though, I don't know if it's been called that anywhere, this is brick. This is the stone in here, this is a different color stone. I think at the highest level, I think they ended up using a drive-it, just because the weight, the height of the building, and the weight, it's a steel building, it's not a wood building, it's durable. It has lots of hoods and equipment up there, HVAC and all that sort of thing. So it's a steel building, tall, durable, good-looking. This is the view from 355, as you're driving north, so if I flip back here, this would be this elevation here. That's the 355 with the outdoor dining, should be, I think they are going to have, I personally, I think they're going to have those little umbrellas, too, but I haven't seen what they are, they're not shown on here, so I can't tell you.
It's actually a retractable awning and wood trellis, so they don't need the umbrellas, so they'll have retractable.
More than eight feet higher, so...
Six foot. Six foot.
No, I don't have her guess.
That's it. It's just a kid's thing.
Never miss a teaching, though.
Yeah.
Is that too soon?
Okay.
And then, let's see, then the other side, the side that is basically, I'm going to go over here, this side over here, which will have plantings, you can see the plantings here, the plantings along this, so this side here, this is the screen wall we talked about, where basically all the, it's some part of the building, even though it's four-sided, has to have some of the ugly bits there. So instead of showing them, we built, we required, actually, we're building, we're So instead of showing them, we built, we required, actually, we're building, we're building that wall for the building so that you don't have to see any of that. And it gives us some additional dimension, so it's not just that box. Here's a box, guess where we are, we're a box of Chili's, okay? That's not it. So it's a, it has a lot of different variation in terms of where the planes are, in and out, I think it'll look great. And that's what's intended to do. We took the time to do a little 3D model and take a look at it. This should be a great looking building.
Pete, if you would, I think it's clear with stone, if you could just point to what's ephes and what's brick.
This up here, I think is ephes, the brown stuff. And this lighter gray material is all brick. And if we can zoom in, you'll see the brick finestrations. Because when I first saw this candidly, I said, no, no. Because I would, it's possible you could have gone, maybe we've made the lines darker and then people could have seen that it really is brick.
Do you have line drawings, Greg?
Can you zoom in?
Yeah, the actual only place that there's ephes in the building...
Oh, look at that. They took that along too.
Is just along the top of the columns.
There it is. That's it. It's over.
The tallest column is actually a PVC material with, made to look like a faux wood with metal trim. I mean, in a perfect world, they'd prefer to put ephes there as well, but they understood that you guys kind of didn't like the ephes on the building.
I apologize, I just didn't scroll down far enough.
But the rest of it is stone. So it's just those caps on the columns.
It wasn't a large argument since we're paying for the brick. But again, our view of it is, this is the signature, this is the entrance to what you're seeing.
True.
It better be great. It better be spectacular. If this is terrible, we're not going to be able to, you know, enunciate what the rest of this project is really about. So we spent a lot of time with our in-house architectural kind of group, go through, work this with the folks from Interplan and with Firebirds to make sure it came out.
Great.
Okay. And then, so this is the back, the back sides, backs are always difficult because we worked very hard to determine could we punch windows in there. The reality is you can't punch windows in there because of the internal configuration, unless you want to look at it. So I said, well, maybe we should put some fake windows in there. Right, fake was out. So it was exactly what they said, that was it, fake's out. No, we're not doing fake. So this is, this is, I think, a very good compromise in terms of putting the same kind of a trellis system on there to add some feeling, to tie the front sides of the building together, et cetera.
It's going to be quiet now. So how, I know there's going to be some issues with it. It sits way up on a hill basically, when you come from 355 side of Frederick Castle Design. When you're coming down from the Watkins Mill Bridge, I'm not really entirely sure yet how much we're going to be able to see up there, but how much of that is parapet and how, where exactly is the roof plane relative to the top of the building? Because I have to say there's enough depth there to hide, at least in conventional terms, the exhaust hood and the exhaust fans.
Dash line, I believe, is the roof line.
So what is that? That's about four feet, I guess?
It's four foot two for this band here.
Plus a foot on top, plus it slopes down.
So it's about six foot two.
Okay, so it's a really healthy parapet to help hide that stuff.
Our goal, and again, you're a little bit below, it rises up, you could have gotten with a lower one, but it, candidly, one of the things we did wrong in the Paramount, I probably should admit this, but what I did wrong is I did not anticipate that the height of that hill would allow us to see the HVAC units. It drives my wife crazy every time we drive there. So I still have to come up with a solution on that, but it's in process.
Greg, can you make it very, pull the site plan back up? And I know it's going to be kind of a low resolution, but to zoom in where the dumpster enclosure is?
Yes.
So on the Paramount building or whatever, is it not called that anymore?
No, the Paramounts are the two first buildings we built. This new one's called the Majestic.
Or Majestic, excuse me, so that's still the name, right?
That's the name, it will not change.
All right. So on that corner where the dumpster is closest...
Yes.
Are there unit windows on the first floor or, remember, it sort of is, it descends above the street a little bit and there's parking underneath and you still see some of that at some points.
Yeah, you're going to, basically, when you look at the Majestic building, you, when you go by there, you'll see you're already, you've got one and a half, basically, at least one to one and a half levels of parking, so you've got ten, twelve feet before the base and then you've got another four.
So effectively, the units are looking over the dumpster enclosure.
That's correct, and it's exactly right.
Okay. And it's got a roof on it because you said it was air-conditioned, so, yeah.
Yes, air-conditioned.
Okay. And then, I don't remember the other site plan we did exactly on this detail, but can you get to this site from Watkins Mill, like a pedestrian walk or is there, is there a way to climb that hill there?
We, well, we, you go ahead.
Yeah, there's, there was part of the approval for SP 12-0002 is this pathway from here, goes from Watkins Mill Road, and they are retaining that pathway.
Okay. But then the landscape area, what does that feel like? A public park or does that feel more like it's owned by the restaurant?
Partially public, partially private. And if he zooms in there, let's see if he can figure out where it is. This section over here with the gazebo and the area, that's meant for area of respite so you can go and, you know, it's again, from you're dealing with, that's the public area. That's an area where you can have, because we have a kids' center inside for aftercare for our residents. We have, in terms of points of differentiation in the world of apartments right now, you're looking for what is a point of differentiation. A part of it's food, so we have an espresso bar, which you'll love, this new restaurant coming, Barking Mad, phenomenal restaurant. Wood burning oven and fresh espresso with counterculture. It has a bar on the outside with craft cocktails as well as eight craft beers. It has hydrogenated, if you've never had nitrogenated coffee before, you'll love it. It's a, you know how the Guinness cup blows up? It's the same thing with coffee. It's unbelievable. And it has 100 to some seats outdoors, for outdoors with the light strung over so you can get starstruck, you just sit there and hopefully you'll have something to eat and drink. That piece of it, that expression, we want to make sure is carried forward with, as a point of differentiation. The Majestic has a kids' center in there where if, as opposed to coming home latchkey kids, there's a place downstairs for your kids to go.
Well, I guess that's what I'm kind of driving at is, does the park feel like it's owned by the Majestic? And so that pathway seems almost private and not a way for the public to make their way up or is it, I mean, how do you kind of reconcile that?
It's open, if you look at the way it's been planted landscaping wise, you have an entrance that's been put to it. And so it does have a, it does have a feeling of imitation, but realistically, if you're coming from the street, from, you're coming from one of the two intersections, nobody hopefully is running across the street, they're never going to go to that middle section. They're really, I think...
I'm more optimistic that the bridge comes in and people start to walk over and come out.
Yeah, but I think they're going, I think they're just going to come straight down, to be perfectly candid, across the main entrance way and walk past, because there's this beautiful park, when you walk in, we've, that Stream Valley buffer? We haven't been allowed to go back in there, right? We have to work back in, we have to get a permission to go back in and rekind of plant some of that because it's, we're not allowed to touch it. But when, when we're allowed to touch it, we're going to be able to reinvigorate that. But you walk straight in, it's beautiful. And then you turn.
I don't think you're being responsive.
Oh, okay, this is my wife.
You've done a great job.
My wife, come on. Would that be all right?
For the record, this is now is critiquing the entry.
Come on up.
Okay. But I don't, I think this will not feel like it's...
Lee, can you introduce yourself?
Jump in.
Lee, could you introduce yourself?
Lee Henry, Potomac, Maryland. So I don't think this feels, oh, I don't think this area feels like it's part of Majestic. I think it relates much more to this sidewalk. I mean, that's how I view of it, view it, that this enhances the pedestrian experience. I actually did a little PowerPoint. You want to explore this?
Well, I think, I think the point I'm really driving at is, I know the path is there, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get is a sense that it's, it feels like a public pathway, that it's not just a, you know, it's owned by the apartments or by the park and it's not some, it's not welcoming to anybody who's coming up the sidewalk to then enter the site and come to the restaurant or go other places there. It's hard to tell from the plan because with it sort of taking the dog leg and...
So the intent is to make the whole project feel, this, this area, I think is an opportunity to make the whole project feel more inviting to the public.
Okay, good.
So the greenhouse is specifically oriented to the road, to have a front door there to be dressed up as a welcoming feature. And the gazebo is just there for people to have a place, a shaded place to sit, to be in the garden, to have sculptures, to, before it was just sort of hedge, sidewalk.
Well, I'll tell you where I got looking at it, I thought I heard Mr. Henry talk about it was an adjunct to some of the daycare services.
No, okay, so we have this children's center that's an amenity to the building. It's not daycare. It's only child, school-aged children. It's not a commercial enterprise. I would see the parents having a nonprofit and participating in it on that level. So it's designed, I mean frankly, one of our problems with leasing right now is elementary school that we, that this project is in is not highly rated. So the goal is to provide enrichment activities that maybe addresses that concern.
So understand what I was going with is that when I think about those sort of services, I think about an area which is great, but it would be fenced off, it would be, you know, made safe so that if kids are in there...
This isn't that at all.
Okay, all right.
So the goal here is if, this is not a playground and the children's center is not designed to provide that kind of function, but you know, if we can interest the children in this project, whether they participate in this after-school or not, to be interested in having their own children's garden, to have an herb garden for the residents, you know, to have, you know, teach them about biology, have little science things in the gazebo, make bird feeders or all those sorts of activities that could connect children with nature, with food, with growing. Or it doesn't have to be children, I'm sure we'll have people in the community who enjoy, you know, having an herb garden, participating in that.
Right, that's great.
So that was the goal, is to have a portion of it be a private planting zone, more controlled for the restaurant and then adjacent to it to have a community herb garden.
Okay, great. All right, that helps. And I think, does that mean any other questions? Question? No? Okay. I wanted to dive in real quick to thank you.
Yes.
To the parking distribution, so...
Can I go back up?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how, how well answers, but you were talking about splitting the parking, but I guess I want to understand very clearly, if the parking lot in front of the restaurant, it's, it's not reserved per se for the restaurant, but are there spots inside on the residential structure parking that are reserved for the residential units? Are they all kind of aligned for the same parking?
Well, with the residential unit, the, we have, we built partitioned off spaces with gated entrance ways. Everything we have is gated and fog controlled.
So it's like the first two buildings?
Exactly the same. And we, but we, instead of just putting 12 or 20 out front, we put 150 or some number like that. And it completely cordoned off and nobody can get in and out. So residents can't really use that and access the, their facilities, their parking. And the red, and in the same way, no one can go and use the residence.
So as a practical matter, this, this parking field will really come off as being for the restaurant, even if there's a few visitors or stragglers that are parking out there and going to the apartment?
That's exactly, and we have, we have a permitting, a sticker program to monitor who's there. We go through and monitor, because obviously parking in these complexes makes you incredibly important. So we actually monitor that. Everyone has reserved spaces and we keep track of it.
Okay, great. Any other questions before you...
Just one quick question. How, you talk about parking, but how about the, like, are there like sidewalks or kind of walkways so you don't have to walk like in the parking area? Because I look at some of the areas in downtown Crown and, and I think we could have, I mean, I love it, I'm not saying that we don't, but there are some areas where park, you have to walk into the parking field to get to some of the restaurants.
What happens is, is along the, and I don't have a picture of it because it's on the Majestic, but what we try to design is on the long walkways, you know, where the park, the space in between, the terminal locations, we provide a walkway for you to get like, for example, can, how do you make this go out again? Oh, great and wisely. Okay, that was easy. As you walk down the pathway here, there is a collector that takes you from here out to there and here out to there. It's big, I think it's about six and a half feet. And so there is a destination, when you park your car, you look down and you see the safe zone, destination for the way out. That's, and there is only one way out because we don't have, it's not like you can come in this side and that side. This is physically separated, this is 10 feet higher than that. So they literally are two completely separate. The residential's on the upper floor and the retail's on the lower floor and you can only enter on opposite end. So we controlled that, separated it. When you park in that residential, you know there is, you came right past where the exit and entrance is, so there is a clear walkway there.
Okay, okay, thanks.
May I ask to see more details on the greenhouse and the gazebo? I don't remember seeing much about them before.
And for that, I'm going to bring you to PowerPoint. I'm going to bring my wife up, is that okay? Should we leave it to PowerPoint?
It is.
Yeah.
I thought maybe if I did this, I wouldn't...
He's really cool. He really is.
Okay, here we go.
We don't doubt that.
You might be, there we go.
As long as you have a butterfly-shaped bike rack, I'm going to prove it.
Yeah.
She's got one.
Yellow.
Of course, it's yellow.
Okay. I just clicked this one. Okay. So here's where Barking Mad is and here's the outdoor seating, here's where the children's center is just to orient you, and this is the area we're talking about. These were our goals, was to create a growing garden for Barking Mad, to provide a community garden that would foster connection among our residents and the natural world, to provide enrichment opportunities for residents, children and adults. So the greenhouse, I was viewing it as an entry feature that was welcoming and also enabled all-season growing of edible flowers, of herbs, of vegetables. And then a trellis system with vines that would block the view of the growing area. And the goal again is to provide this escape. So maybe you're at Kaiser and you have time before you walk over, you have a sandwich outside or you have a nice area for that. So this is the company I'm talking to about the greenhouse and this is again, to orient it towards the road. So in the fall, we can have pumpkins out there, that sort of thing.
So Lee, I don't mean to cut you off, but who owns this? Like when, when this is operating, who's really going to oversee and maintain the grounds?
Barking Mad or this, this garden?
Yeah, and the greenhouse and all these features.
So the greenhouse will have to be maintained by Barking Mad. Same with the, the growing gardens. Now the residential, I'm assuming the management company for the apartments, which we're involved with, would be managing the residential or a more community garden part of it. So the landscaping firm for Spectrum would have responsibility for some of that. Just like, I guess, the landscaping company will be, would be responsible under the other plan.
Okay.
Oh, so this, so this is an example of a sort of a trellis system that could shield this growing area. This is just an example of a little kind of gazebo and another little whimsical teepee that people might enjoy. And so here's the plan that we talked about. In the greenhouse, we would like to use an aeraponics system. And I detail here some of the advantages. It allows for all-season growing, it's very quick, you have a quicker turnaround on plant production, it uses a lot less water and grows a lot more plants than a traditional system. And again, it's a smaller footprint than if we were doing a hydroponic system. Can grow a fairly wide variety of plants and it's organic. You don't need pesticides and that sort of thing. And this is how it works. It's a water reservoir and you, you start the seedlings with little wool plugs and then when they establish, you put them in here. And then they're nourished from the water flowing down through the...
Did the last screen say less than 10%?
That's what they purport.
Really? Wow.
Because again, it's all contained, you're not going to have all this evaporation. This is just the sorts of things, cilantro and broccoli and Swiss chard, you can all grow all kinds of things. Here's what, they're really quite beautiful in their own way. Grow, can grow edible flowers.
That's exciting. So you guys will establish that and the restaurant will take over the ongoing maintenance and harvesting and, yeah. Excellent. All right. Any other questions?
Just noting that we don't have detailed plans on that, but we probably should add a condition. The app... condition, the applicant, to provide detailed plans of the trellis system, the greenhouse, and the gazebo for staff approval.
Well, that was actually a question I had for staff, kinda technically, we have a Firebirds application here, or at least that's the way it's presented, does it really include this garden, or is it?
It does include it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Once we started getting into conversations about the greenhouse being maintained by another restaurant and.
Right.
So, okay.
We as a developer have primary control over that maintenance of those facilities.
Okay.
It's obviously our front door.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience that was here to testify, or are you part of the applicants, I think? Okay, got it. So Greg, what's the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends the planning commission grant approval to AFP 7220-2016, Firebirds Amendment to Final Plan, funding and performance of sections 24-170 and 24-172A for the city's zoning ordinance with one condition.
Two conditions.
Two conditions, sorry.
Two conditions.
Thank you.
Great, alright, any concerns?
Comments?
Comments?
Sure.
I, I just, it's really great to see so much care taken into this project, and I'm excited. Looks great.
It's an amenity for the entire city, not just the local community.
And it's, it's great to see that you're not just like, eh, we'll build this and then leave, I mean, you're really putting a lot of thought into this and.
And a lot of care.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
A lot of care, a lot of concern.
Appreciate that.
That's why we're trying to get to the urban core, if we can get the interchange in, wait till you see that.
Right.
Knock your socks off.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Success is in the details, right?
Put a lot of time, this is my.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know where the devil or God are, but success is in the details, so I think you get the details right.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's a well-formulated, well-developed plan. I, I actually look forward, in, in whatever the way this happens, but when that aeroponic gardening takes, I, I think that's something that deserves a little bit of press and some field trips to be able to see that.
And maybe alcohol, who knows? This is my wife. This is really her baby, I mean, really, it is.
Maryland added one more thing to your list, too, so.
Yeah.
Alright, is there any more comment or concerns? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve AFP 272, I'm sorry, 7220-2016 amendment to final plan approval, finding it in compliance with 24-170 and 24-172A, and the city zoning ordinance with the two conditions as put into the record.
Second.
One comment before we make the motion, we, we ended the discussion very much on the garden and the greenhouse, but I do want to note for the record that I think we're all very satisfied with the way the Firebirds building itself was developed and.
Oh, by the way, great.
Yeah, which this is predominantly what the.
The movement's second in all, if they were pleased, say aye.
Aye.
Passaged unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good for you, seeing it.
Thank you.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
That takes us to, from the commission, Matt, can I start down at your end of the night?
Nothing for me.
No, okay.
Just again commending the city maintenance for doing the stellar job of keeping the ice down to a minimum and retreating the roads and just getting out there at the right time and doing the right thing, so, very proud of being part of the city of Gaithersburg and being a citizen of the city of Gaithersburg.
Great job. Dan, anything tonight?
No, I don't have anything, I just wanna, I concur with Lloyd.
Okay. Alright, Gary?
That's it. Okay, well, this is kind of a swan dive, because I think my.
Swan dive, swan song.
You mixed your metaphors.
Swan song.
You mixed your metaphors.
Because I think my next meeting may be my last meeting, but I don't wanna get all fired up and, and savvy about that, but I just wanna say that now that I'm retired, I'm sure I can say his name, that when I became in a high position at the corporation I worked for, Warren Buffett said, well, what are you doing for the community? What are you doing to help people? And I said, I'm, I'm on the planning commission for the city of Gaithersburg, and he was quiet for quite a while, and then he came back to me and he said, are you crazy? He said, you know, you get, you know, there's a satisfaction versus challenge that, that you have to deal with, and I said, well, I work for a city with character, and it's a lot more satisfaction than there is challenge. And he said, where's that? And I said, Gaithersburg, Maryland. Just so you know my history, I went to Gaithersburg Elementary School, Gaithersburg Junior High School, well, elementary to junior high school, and then to Gaithersburg High School. My son was a fourth generation in my family, born in Gaithersburg. It's always been a passion to me, and I have to tell you that I have learned so much, I've become closer to the city of Gaithersburg. I was like Gaithersburger in the 1960s, when we were referred to by the Grease Man as Gaethersburg, and we were a friendly farm home community, but what we have become is something I'm so proud of, and it's a result of the people on this dais, the leadership in the planning commission, the leadership in the city, our attorney, these ladies who have been so helpful to me, it's, it is a passion that will never leave me, and I will be out there sometimes watching you and challenging you, but I just wanna leave you with one thought that is, that is my passion for not only the city and the county and the state and the United States. And I know that sounds huge, but just remember, from little orch, little acorns do great trees grow. Just keep that in mind, because, and you did this to me, Danny, with your passion, last meeting about, you know, stopping at railroads.
Right.
When the, when the, signed whatever.
Crossed the guard.
Yes, come down. One thing that I have been so blessed in my life, not only born in the United States, but being affiliated with the city of Gaithersburg, is that I've been able to travel north, south, east and west, and into other countries, and I've heard over and over and over again how applauded we are by other entities for our, our efforts to try to clean up the Chesapeake Bay and our efforts to continue to support the Calenectus sapidus, also known as beautiful swimmers, also known as the blue claw crab. They are regarded as the, the most delicious crabs in the whole world, which leads me to where I'm going with this, and there's nothing worse than a reformed smoker, and I am a reformed smoker, and I will tell you personally that I have three family members who died from smoking, it was their choice, and a fourth family member who is not long for this world because of smoking. And when people do that, they do that to themselves, okay? When I quit smoking, I gained 30 pounds, and I've lost that plus five more pounds, but just let me say that the most, I did some homework on this, too, now that I'm retired. The most common litter in the United States and in the world, 30% of litter on our shorelines and waterways and land is cigarette butts.
Wow.
2,189,232 butts were collected in the 2009 cleanup, weighing 821 pounds. Now, I see people all the time, not frequently, in Gaithersburg, in Montgomery County, anywhere I go, flicking the cigarette out the, out the car. And what happens to those chemicals, and I have some of them listed here, growing tobacco and manufacturing of cigarettes includes pesticides, herbicides, insecticides, fungicides, and rotendicides. And when you smoke them in a cigarette, they become even more toxic. And while San Francisco puts a tax on cigarettes to help deal with the post-consumption disposal based on US government and state laws, and I wanna save the blue claw crab to be, and the Chesapeake Bay, to define what a great state this is forever, and it has to start somewhere, and I will not stop with just the great city of Gaithersburg. I'm planting that acorn for you. I'm gonna take this as far as I can, because I am a reformed smoker, but when I think about the da, the aquatic damage it does, not only to the calenectus sapidus, but to the blue fish, to the sea bass, to everything that's out there, they didn't ask for this, and they're already being inundated with other chemicals, we should try to do something that we can. And I will say that the last time I made a statement to the city of Gaithersburg about in my neighborhood, how people run stop signs, I can tell you that I've seen a lot more activity there, and I've got neighbors complaining to me about the speeding tickets they're getting, and I'm like, well, what did you think was good? So just put this in your treasure chest of things to do to help this great city. I am, I am not going to be here and, and after March, and I will not say that I'm stepping down, because I'm not. I, I moved from the Lord's Table at St. Martin's Church to here, and I'm moving from here to even greater things, thanks to some of the input from Trudy. I'll be sharing my residence between here and a place I'll call Paradise, they're both paradise, but I will be so involved in continuing to contribute to the community that, that means so much to me. So, next, next planning commission meeting, I won't speak nearly as much, but I'll leave you with those thoughts. Thank you, gentlemen, it has been such, and ladies, it's been such a pleasure to work with you, it'll be an experience that will be with me all the days of my life, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry, and we'll, we'll take some time, as will the council, mayor and council, to, to really express our appreciation for all that you've done for the city of Gaithersburg, but those were, that was a, a great, a great reflection on, on what's important and what, what you, what's important to you and what should be important to us, too, so I think we really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Marty, do you?
I've got a real quick update on our planning awards, and I passed down, what I've got is some suggested categories, and on the left side of the sheet, you'll see categories from past years, and they're really fairly mundane, and this was kind of a conglomeration, we didn't do awards in all of these categories all the years, but basically it was, it was taking the type and then, and then dividing them up, whether it was renovation or existing or new. It seemed a little bit generic to me, so I, I looked around, tried to get some other ideas, and came up with, with a couple of different either category or theme, depending on how we, how we wanted to go forward, and I just kinda throw this out there for you guys to maybe look at, and, and maybe over the next week or so, email me your thoughts on whether we wanna kinda get gimmicky and go with a theme kind of thing, and then divide it up into, into some categories, or, or take it into, you know, some real true, you know, mixed-use, transorientive development. Some of, some of these, you know, I, I don't, as we look for what's going to be something we can carry on for the 10th annual and 15th annual, I, I wanna make sure we're, we're coming up with a, an idea that will have some life to it, so.
Great.
So I, I just kinda throw that out for you, it's been a long night, so we don't need to have a protracted discussion on it tonight, but maybe get your ideas back to me and, and we'll go from there.
Marty, do you have any sense how many projects are gonna be eligible, how many, you know?
You know, I think what, what we will probably do is, is put a timeframe on it and, and maybe say the past two or three years would be still eligible, only because, you know, the truly, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna only have two projects to choose from.
Right.
So I mean, with the, with the number of, you know, of applications that we get, we wanna make sure we have a good pool to choose from, and, and some of these projects, you know, we just heard about one tonight, that is a multi-year, you know, and it may be, you know, something that originally was finished three or four years ago, but we wanna wait and see how it culminates, so.
Sure. Great, so we'll take this, and then maybe the next meeting, come back with comments, or email your comments, and go from there, does that make sense?
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thanks, Marty.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, Trudy?
Well, first I have an announcement. In preparation for the update to the parks and recreation element of the master plan, residents are asked to complete an online survey about existing amenities and what facilities and programs might be needed in the future, and one lucky respondent will receive a Parks, Recreation and Culture 2016 gift pack with passes to recreational facilities, theater performances, and this year's Winter Lights Festival, the one in the, in the winter, coming up, not last. The 12-question survey is available on the city's website through February 26th, so we'd appreciate not only this commission taking part of it, but all the citizens.
I think a chance that a couple of major golf tickets are, well, that's.
As far as the commission's calendar, we have a joint meeting next week with the Historic District Commission on their master plan element, that will be Wednesday, February 24th, up in the gallery at 7:30, I believe. And then our planning commission meeting on March the 2nd, we have a work session with the Parks, Recreation and Culture staff about their master plan on Thursday, March 10th, at 7:00 PM in the Activity Center in Room A at Borah Park.
That's 7:00 PM, right?
7:00 PM.
Okay.
And then the planning commission meeting on March the 16th, and then last night, following the joint public hearing, the mayor and council agreed to sponsor a text amendment on the heights in the E1 zone, and we will have a public hearing on March the 21st with the mayor and city council, that's on Monday.
Okay. I think we got a, we got a poll question on that one, right? So everybody should have a.
Yes.
That date already?
Yes.
Good. Alright. It's gonna be a busy couple of months, it sounds like.
Yes.
Great. Anything else from anybody? If not, have a good evening, we're adjourned.
Matt, they did go.